Session, the board has been in executive session since six o'clock to discuss three tenure candidates, contractual matter, and a litigation matter. If we could stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Introductions.
Dave Hurst.
John Walston.
Meredith Moriarty.
Jody Monroe.
Holly Dallenbaum.
Catherine Nato.
Robert Teeger.
John McPhillips.
And Willow Bear and Christine Beck are not able to be here tonight. We, I'm guessing we have some PIG students with us in the audience. Thanks for joining us. And your obligation is to stay here until nine o'clock or when the meeting ends, whichever one comes first. So if for some reason we hit nine o'clock, we'll take a recess so that you guys can leave. And I, you probably need a signature from somebody. We have sign out sheets or you can see any member of the board.
If they have sheets, then they don't need to sign in.
Okay.
We can just initial them.
All right. So if you have a sheet that you need to signature, just see a member of the board. First up is our approval of minutes. It is recommended by the superintendent that the Board of Education approve the minutes from the October 26th, 2022 regular board meeting.
Still moved?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes. Next, our meeting reports, and first is our superintendent's report.
Sure, thank you. I'd like to have John McPhillips talk a little bit about, we changed our tax collection process. I don't know if you remember, we had some issues in the past, so John has an update to share with the board in regards to our tax collection status and how the process went overall.
Thank you Superintendent Monroe. The business officer this year just finalized the tax collection process for the 2223 school year. Am I on?
I think you're sorry.
Is red, huh?
Yeah.
Oh, good.
The other one, I'm sorry.
It was at, to the superintendent's point, we had brought that process into place this year. Special thanks to Michelle Curtis and Tom Morton and the business office for really handling a lion's share of tax receipts and payment processing associated with both the school tax levy as well as the library tax levy. It's a lot of paperwork, a lot of receipt processing, and for all intents and purposes, it was a great success. We're using a new software application this year which was tracking all of the receipts. We continued our relationship with Pioneer Bank, two branches locally where tax residents could drop off their tax payments. We went and picked those tax payments up and then processed them accordingly. We did have a little bit of feedback for the software developers to make a couple of adjustments that would provide a little bit better audit detail moving forward. And all in all, it was relatively successful. But I wanted to highlight, I was looking at the receipts as of November 1st. Just for some context, the school taxes come out, the school tax bills come out, the residents have the opportunity to pay their school taxes penalty free up until September 30th or October 1st, depending on where September 30th falls on the week. If it's a weekend, you can still, we'll accept a recorded payment as of October 1st with a penalty. Between the dates of October 1st and October 31st, we're still happy to accept tax payments, but there is a 2% penalty fee associated with those payments. After October 31st, the school district and the business offices out of the tax collection process. Any additional tax payments after October 31st need to be turned over to the, to Albany County for purposes of collection. One of the things I wanted to look at over the past three calendar years, where does the town of Bethlehem, the town of New Scotland, and the school district as a whole stand? So roughly, pretty much on par. I was looking at this more in terms of a status of both cash flow as well as an overall economic indicator for the town. If we scroll a little bit more to the right, you'll get a sort of total tally for roughly in terms of percent collected for the total town of Bethlehem and town of New Scotland combined for the school tax levy. We collected 97.7% of the overall tax levy. There's roughly 2.3% that, of tax dollars that the district did not collect over September and October. Roughly $270,000 was still outstanding compared to the prior year. Though, that $1.6 million in uncollected taxes along with 65 parcels, the district will turn over to Albany County for purposes of collection. There is an agenda item on the board's agenda later on that provides the business office and the tax collector the authorization to submit those parcels and delinquent taxes to the county. That does need to be submitted by November 15th under real property tax law. That's why it's sort of in the agenda for this meeting to provide the authority for the tax collection officer to submit that file. Overall, the school district was ultimately made whole for purposes of any delinquent taxes. There is a bit of a, from a cash flow perspective, the district is not made whole until on or about April 1st under real property tax law. The county of Albany will make the district whole for any delinquent taxes not collected as of October 31st.
Is that it?
That's it.
Thanks. Does anyone have any questions on that? And the only other announcement I wanted to make was in regards to our safety forum we held last night. I just want to thank all of the staff who came out and were involved in not only putting that presentation together, but being there to respond to questions. We had a lot of questions submitted in advance of the forum, and then we had several questions submitted during the forum. We also had the Bethlehem police participate in the presentation, and we had worked with Albany County Mental Health in advance to get resources available for families. We were hoping for a larger turnout, although I think maybe the day after Halloween, and it was a nice evening, could have deterred people, but it was recorded. And it will be up on our YouTube channel probably sometime next week because we do have to do some captioning and formatting with it, but it will be available for people to watch. So, that's my report. Thanks.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions for Jody?
Next up is our board report. First, I just wanted to say thank you to the middle school for hosting us. We are happy to be here on our tour of schools. I also wanted to say thank you to parents and staff at all our elementary schools and at the middle school for all of the Halloween fun and festivities that took place this past Friday. All the reports I heard were that all the kids had a great time and were really excited to be back doing their Halloween fun. I also wanted to report out, Christine and I attended the NISBA conference this past Friday and Saturday, and had an opportunity to attend a bunch of different educational seminars during those couple of days. In particular, on some of the ones that I went to, there was one about First Amendment topics related to school boards, and one, a couple relating to some equity experiences and journeys that some other school districts have been on. And one of the things that particularly stood out to me actually was the keynote speaker this year was Marlee Matlin, who did a fabulous job talking about her experience going through public school and the importance of DEI and access for all students. And it was, it was very inspiring. So if anybody wants more details, just reach out to me or Christine, we can tell you about some of those things. And that's all I have. If anyone has anything else, go ahead. Catherine?
Yeah, I just wanted to jump in and, you know, really think, Jody, the, I was at the safety presentation last night, the panel discussion. It was absolutely fantastic, and we had, you know, the staff who participated in the panel and who presented really had great responses to very thoughtful questions from the community. So it was really great to see that engagement as well. And then I also just wanted to mention, we had a, we had quite a number of staff who attended to be on hand, just to be there and talking with folks. They took their Tuesday night to go out and do that as well, and I really want to thank them for that because it just added to the conversation and provided a lot more depth. So thank you to everybody who put that together and who did such a great job.
Thank you. Anybody else have anything?
I just wanted to echo Catherine's comments and also officially welcome John. John McPhillips is our new chief financial officer. We will miss Judy, but I wanted to say thank you and to her, and we really are excited to work with you, so welcome to your first official meeting.
Thank you very much. Glad to be here.
Anybody else? All right. Do we have anybody here from the high school student senate?
Hi, I'm Elizabeth Baldwin, and some of our student senate updates are that we just secured a donation in our backpack room from Stuart's. And essentially, we get 150 milk and egg cards, each 150. And they give our families who get backpacks from it the opportunity to exchange the card for half a gallon of milk every other week, and for the egg card, it is a carton of eggs every month. And we also have secured a donation from the Bethlehem Community Fund to hopefully get cards for the rest of the year so we can keep this opportunity available for families in our community. And additionally, we would like to congratulate some of our senators and the rest of the field hockey team on their first sectional title in their program's history, and wish them luck on Sunday at regional. So, thank you.
Thanks. How are you guys doing generally for supplies for the backpack program?
We're doing great. We have a very generous relationship with the Hannaford and over in Delmar, and they offer us a lot of free food and pallets from them, as well as other donations from the community.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda tonight is our presentation, and we have a presentation from Kristin Connor on building healthy relationships and sexual misconduct prevention.
Hi, good evening everyone. I'm Kristin Connor, I'm the K-12 counseling supervisor in the district, and I would love to be able to present this tonight, but actually Carly Young is the one who's going to steal the show. I just have the great pleasure of introducing her. So I wanted to first just say that we had hoped that Dr. Klugman could have made it back in time to be here this evening as he is one of our biggest supporters in the counseling department. So I will introduce Carla and just give you kind of an overview of what this presentation's about. So Carla's been a middle school counselor. I don't know if any of you recognize Mrs. Young because she's been here for 18 years. And so we've had the great pleasure of working together for the last seven. And I would say over the time that she's been here, the role of the counselor has really evolved. And I have witnessed that as working with all of our counselors in this district. And what Carla's done is she's taken a lot of the experience that she's had, and she's read, as you'll see, all of her publication, all the publications and the journals and the resources that she's accumulated, and she shares her knowledge with the students based on need, and she shares it with her colleagues. And so we learn a lot from Carla because she creates lessons, as you'll see tonight, not only here for the middle school, but she does it also up at the high school and at the elementary level. And so she's really helping our comprehensive counseling program grow and evolve with time. And so some of you may recognize her from being up at the high school last year in health classes, and some of you may have recognized her as being your counselor. So I, it's with great pleasure that I get to introduce Carla and have her talk about this really important topic, not only that it impacts here at the middle school, but also at the high school as well.
Thank you very much, Kristin. And thank you to the board, thank you for having me. I know that you're very busy, you have a lot of things to discuss. I really appreciate you giving me some of your time so that I can talk about the work that we've been doing, the building healthy relationships and sexual misconduct prevention. We're developing curriculum, and we've been implementing a lot of that over the past year. And thank you to the students. I'm happy to see so many students here because a lot of this really started from student comments and student feedback. So we listen to you. It might not always seem that way, but we do listen to you, and we appreciate all your feedback. What I'm going to be talking about tonight is not our full comprehensive school counseling plan, just a piece of it, just the pieces that relate to the healthy relationships and the sexual misconduct prevention. So like I said, it's, this really started from student comments, students reaching out and saying, "We want to talk more about this." And so as I was hearing these comments, I started to do some research on my own. And one of the first places that I looked was to Dr. Lisa Henkelman, and she is the author of Girls Without Limits. She's also the founder of an agency, a research agency called Rocks, which is Ruling Our Experience. And what they do is evidence-based programming, research, professional development. She works a lot with ASCA, which is the American School Counseling Association, which I'm a member of. So anytime something can come up or we're hearing from our students, that's someplace that we can go to. We can go to the American School Counseling Association. Where do we go to? Who are the experts? So I attended a lot of Dr. Henkelman's trainings, read her books, participated in all of that. And here is just a snapshot, a very small snapshot of some of the information that we were able to pull up. So it was in 2017 that Dr. Henkelman did some research. She's updating the research this year, but based on what Bethlehem students were telling us, we wanted to take a look at some data across the country and what was going on. So some of the statistics that she pulled up was that 50% of 5th grade girls report that boys are disrespectful to females. This figure rises to 80% by the time they enter high school, and upward of 90% of females report being sexually harassed by the time they graduate. I'll say, I'm not totally surprised by these numbers, but alarmed by them. And as a school counselor, I think that this just, those statistics show us, we just need to be having more conversations, more understanding, more open dialogue. I did a little bit more research and started looking into Dr. Zalum's work. And Dr. Zalum was a health teacher for many years, then was a school administrator, she was a DEI specialist, all out in California. And she wrote a book, so she did a lot of research and wrote a book, Sex Teens and Everything in Between, and some of her statistics from that book are up there too. Girls between the ages of 12 and 14 are at highest risk of sexual harassment. So as a primarily middle school counselor, that was eye-opening for me. She also talked a lot about students in college and the sexual harassment and sexual assault that happens in colleges. And so I started like diving into that a little bit and watching some documentaries, and I was kind of getting fired up about like, why aren't the colleges doing more? And what do we need to do? And then something very eye-opening happened where they started talking about the red zone. And the red zone is the freshman year of college, September, October, and November. And they call it the red zone because that is when the largest number of sexual harassment and sexual assaults take place. So again, I'm thinking, what can the colleges do? What can the colleges do? And then I think, well, these are our kids. You know, we've just sent you out into the world, into college. What can we do to better prepare you so that you don't become a victim of or perpetrator of sexual assault or sexual misconduct? So in addition to doing some research, I wanted to talk to the experts. So we took two days where we kind of camped out in D-122. I had Brittany Conklin with me, who was an intern at the time at the high school. She's now the Eagle counselor. And we sat with kids and just had open dialogue. We had about 75 students stop in, and they could just let us know what they wanted to know more about. So I did have some students coming in saying that they wanted to talk about skipping lunch, that they wanted to talk about advanced classes, the amount of homework. But I will tell you, most of the comments were about, we want to talk about relationships. We want to talk about boundaries. We want to have these discussions with adults and with each other. So there's, those are just some of the comments up there. We do have a document that we can share that Brittany was able to take notes and keep track of what the students were talking about. Another important piece of this puzzle is Aaron's Law. So Aaron's Law was passed August 2019 in New York State, and it is a law that requires public schools to talk to students K, grades K-8 about prevention, about sexual abuse, exploitation. You may have not heard of Aaron's Law, many people haven't, and you can see the Times Union article. It passed with very little fanfare, and not too long after it passed was March 2020. So there were a few other things going on in March 2020 that maybe Aaron's Law took a backseat to. But I think that it's important that we address Aaron's Law and that we continue those conversations. All right. So in looking at all of this, I wanted to look at it two different ways. Direct service to our students, but then also indirect service to the adults in the students' lives, because that's how we're going to make the most impact, is when we can talk to everybody. All right. So first, I'll talk a little bit about the direct service that we provided last year. We read "Maybe He Just Likes You" with 5th and 6th graders with some action-based research. So we, our action-based research was actually at Elsmere, and it was the most fun ever. So I would go over once to twice a week and read with the Elsmere students, and then we had lessons, and the lessons are listed up there where we could have these conversations to support the book. What are boundaries? What are our connections? What does a middle school counselor do? You can see some pictures up there too. I couldn't get in every day, which I really wanted to because Elsmere was so much fun. But because I couldn't get in there every day, the middle school staff was amazing in recording themselves reading chapters of the book. So we tied this into the transition time. So right before the 5th graders came up to the middle school to visit, they had seen recordings of their principals reading to them, their future math teacher reading to them, their English teachers, their counselors. So they felt like they knew the staff a little bit before they even ever entered the building. Plus, which was a lot of fun, was they would give me updates on who did the best job reading the chapters when I would show up, and they would critique them on who did the best, which was awesome. So we did that in 5th grade. We also read this book with all of the 6th graders, and just trying to figure out what was the most appropriate age level for it. I think it was successful in both grade levels. We've decided to move forward with 6th grade though. So we're going to continue to read this book in 6th grade, starting in probably April or May this year. All right. Also in 6th grade, we have the Beautiful Me workshop. This is not something new, this is something we've been doing for about 10 years. It was Kim Panera, one of the high school social workers. She had attended this program at Sienna College, and so she brought it here to Bethlehem. So we've been running this for about 10 years. We do it in small groups, and it's usually about a two and a half hour workshop. We talk about self-awareness, self-reflection, self-care rules, and self-help. Right now, we have 14 trained staff so that we have a variety of staff that can implement this program. In 7th grade last year, we collaborated with the Albany County Crime Victims and Sexual Violence Center. They came to our family and consumer classes, and they started in November, finished up around January, and talked about the topics you can see up there. Healthy and unhealthy relationships, abusive relationships, consent, empathy, boundaries, and bystander intervention. In 8th grade, and we're just finishing up the 8th grade lessons this week, we're pushing in with the health teachers. The counselors and social workers are going into the health classes and talking about crossing the line, internet safety, warning signs and red flags, and non-negotiables of relationships and how to identify those. This year, we're spending more time on the safety planning element of it, and so today we were writing safety plans with 8th graders. Helping them to really make it more specific, using the word "actually." Instead of, "I will talk to a trusted adult," who will you actually talk to? Who is that person? I'll get out of the situation. Where are you actually going to go? I'm doing those follow-up questions with them. Grades 9 and 10, so we're trying to get a full scope and sequence with the building healthy relationships. In grades 9 and 10, last year we offered a Rocks program. This is the program that was developed by Dr. Henkelman that I talked about earlier. This is a 20-week program. We offered it 9th period to 9th and 10th grade female students and covered those topics, the managing stress, pressure, relationships. We ended on physical self-defense, which a lot of the girls really liked. So we got, it was myself and Jessica Van Warmer who ran the program last year. This time, I'm doing it with Kara Kowalski from the high school. And so we got trained in physical self-defense, and then we're able to train the students, which was a lot of fun. And here's some of the feedback that we had from the students. And there is, for anyone who has access to the presentation, there is a link on the bottom of this where you can get the actual survey results of the students that went through the program. All right, after that, so I'm seeing a lot of familiar faces. So some of the students here participated in a couple of lessons where we pushed into the high school health classes. So this would probably be 10th through 12th graders that we had participating in these lessons. The first day we went in, and we talked about warning signs and red flags of relationships. They watched some videos, heard some scenarios, got actual red flags that they could wave when they saw warning signs in a relationship. We talked, as they were watching the video and waving the flags, we're talking about coercion, manipulation, peer pressure. I have to say, I was very impressed with the high school students. They knew when and how to use refusal skills. They were able to identify, when we watched certain videos and talked about different scenarios, they were able to identify manipulation, coercion, and absolutely like, they would not do, nope, they would never get involved in coercion or manipulation, never, ever, ever. And I believed them, and they believed themselves. The next day, we went in, and I do see some familiar faces, wow, we divided the class in half. Half went out into the hallway and half stayed in the classroom. The half that stayed in the classroom got their choice of a full-size candy bar. The half that was out in the hallway didn't get anything. And their task was to come in and convince the students in the classroom to hand over their candy. So it was very, it was a low-stakes situation. It's candy, right? But what we saw was how quickly some students were sliding into manipulation, coercion, peer pressure, we saw a little blackmail, there was all different things. So it was, it was in good fun. I would say that there was also a lot of laughing, but it was practicing our refusal skills in a low-stakes situation and seeing how easily, when we think we deserve something, how easily we can become the person who's using manipulation and coercion. All right. In addition to that, as part of the lesson, they were given, and we actually gave these to 8th graders today, each student was given a pocket guide. The template for this pocket guide was provided by a program called Not a Number, Love 146. And this was a training that I took part in last October. So they provide the template, and then we're able to choose what numbers we put into this resource guide. So this resource guide includes national hotlines, and it also includes local resources. So our high school health classes were given this resource guide last year, and all of our 8th graders were given it today or will be given the guide tomorrow. And it's part of the safety planning lesson. Who will you call? Where will you go? Find some numbers in this resource guide that can help you. So in addition to those direct services, we want to provide indirect services to the adults in our students' lives. So last school year, for the conference day, which, the day before school, we presented to the social workers, counselors, and psychologists of the district. I presented at a building-level staff meeting last year, ran a Beautiful Me training so that we can get more staff trained in Beautiful Me so that we can reach more students. We also did a BOU presentation for parents so that we can get this information out to parents as well. I mentioned ASCA, the American School Counseling Association. Our counseling department are also members of NISC, and so I'll be, I attended the conference last year, and I'll be attending again this year to present and also collaborate with other counselors. We're lucky this year, it happens to be in Albany, so that will be convenient and easy. We're also doing a lot of collaboration with Niskiuna and Gilderland right now, just talking with those counselors. What are they doing? What are they seeing? How can we support each other as counselors? In addition to that, we have a counseling library for our staff and a counseling book club. And so these are some of the books and the resources that we have available to teachers here in the building. So they can sign these books out and then come and talk to us about their thoughts, their questions. And then I had one teacher come to me, Kristin Burns, I don't know if any of you had her, 8th grade social studies. She said, "You should really start a book club with some of these books." So last year, we had a book club for Under Pressure, and this year, we have a book club for Girls Without Limits. Both of these books say that it's to help female students. I'm telling you, they're really for anybody. Under Pressure specifically talks about like stress management, things we can handle, big deals, little deals, things like that. Girls Without Limits gets into a lot of social media types of things too. So we're having, we ran- So we're having, we ran Under Pressure last year, Girls Without Limits this year. So again, this is not the whole counseling comprehensive plan. This slide is mostly just my thoughts and hopes for the upcoming year and plans. Updating the eighth-grade lessons. We did that this past week, and we spent a lot more time, like I said, on the safety planning. And I do think that that has gone well, and we've been able to give the kids some concrete resources. I've been working with Ryan St. John to implement, develop and implement a Be Strong, Be Wise, Healthy Relationship Program. And that is based on a program by Amy Carpenter. And she has five lessons, step-by-step on, you know, some of the lessons are defining the problem, building your herd, which is about protecting each other, managing healthy relationships. Safety planning is a big piece of that. She has some quizzes and things that you can take to figure out, are you more likely to freeze, or fight, or flee a situation? And then how you can tailor your safety plan based on that personality trait of yours. We also want to continue the Beautiful Me empowerment program. The goal is to offer it to all sixth-grade girls. The girls can certainly opt out, but our goal is that we have as many attend as possible. We want to develop and implement additional sixth-grade empowerment programs that are gender-neutral. So Beautiful Me is specifically for female students. It was created by the Hans Family Foundation to honor their three daughters. And so they have asked that we keep it to just a program for females. But myself and China Smith have been having a lot of conversations about coming up with something that would be more gender-neutral. Gilderlin School District, Farnsworth Middle School, is also working on something very similar. So we're hoping to communicate with them about that. I address Aaron's Law. Right now, our elementary schools are working with Aaron's Law. Sometimes the teacher is doing it, sometimes the counselor. I would love to just see more collaboration. Ideally, maybe an elementary health teacher that could go in and provide those consistent lessons across each one of the elementary buildings. We would also like to add more Rocks programs. So that was the ninth and 10th grade program that I talked about. Carol Kowalski and I have already started this year's Rocks program at the high school. We have four staff members trained at the middle school to provide Rocks. The issue is funding right now. Rocks does have a fee for each student that goes through it. So we're just waiting to hear back from the BOU to see. It looks like they're going to help us with some of that funding for the middle school. Continue to add book clubs. They've been going well, and we'd like to continue to do that. And then continued collaboration with the seventh-grade teachers. Have picked out some really good books for this year to talk about, talk more about diversity, equity, and inclusion. So China Smith and I have been talking about pushing in for the Ghost Boys discussion, the Harbor Me discussions. And then to participate in NISC again so that we can collaborate more with other counselors in the area and find out what they're doing. Any questions?
I have a couple. I was, I'm glad to see on there that you're working on developing a, or hope to develop and implement a program at the sixth-grade level that's not gender-specific. Because one of the questions I had was, you know, the programs at sixth grade and for the ninth and 10th graders are focused on girls. And, you know, are those accessible to our non-binary students who I think sometimes get left out?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. And so that was one of the conversations that China and I were having, is that we want something to be gender-neutral. Yeah, I think it's important on all ends of it, that we have these empowerment programs, these healthy relationship programs across the board for all genders. So yeah, that is definitely something that we want to work on. I don't want to not have Beautiful Me because it only includes female students, because I think that there's something powerful about that as well. But absolutely, I hear that, too.
Sure. So, you know, I would encourage it maybe at the ninth and 10th grade level as well, or if there's a way to include...
Absolutely. So that's what we're trying to do, yeah.
Because there may be some non-binary students who would feel comfortable participating in that program.
Absolutely, yeah, yeah. So that's, I'm hoping that that's where the Be Strong, Be Wise curriculum comes in. Because as I talk with Ryan St. John, just looking at the scheduling and planning of that, that wouldn't necessarily be something that we push into classes to do. That would be something more like an after-school program, which is the way that Rocks is, or the ninth-period program, which is the way that Rocks is designed up there. And we do have a couple of counselors here, too. Matt Varnan and Andy Lenher are working on the Real Me program, which is for sixth-grade boys, which is, talks about self-esteem, character development, those types of things as well.
And then, I'm just kind of curious, your thoughts on, you know, how you're working with the staff in the buildings to, on responding to reports from students of sexual harassment or sexual assault? Because those are, as a board member, those are some concerns that I hear are that the, that students report issues and they're not heard or responded to. So I don't know if you could speak to that at all?
Yeah. So that was what we're trying to do with the presentations to the counselors, social workers, and psychologists that we did last year, and then the staff meetings. Really talking to staff about how the most important thing is to listen. We are not the investigators to listen and then know the right person that staff should report to, right? So whether it's their Title IX coordinator, letting them know, finding the school counselor, finding the administrator. And I think very well-intentioned, people try to investigate sometimes and they ask a lot of questions. But in that moment, when a student is disclosing something, listen, support, and provide that, you know, the resources of, here's some people you can go to. Here's the counselors, Title IX coordinator, and administration.
Catherine, do you have a question?
Yes. So many. This is, thank you so much. This is a fantastic presentation. And it's great. And I just wanted to lift up what Holly was saying, because some of the same questions came to mind. Like, I am a huge proponent of gender-specific programming and like that, and also making sure that that's, that...
Equitable.
Yeah, that it's equitable, and that it's accessible for folks in how they identify, not just how they present.
Right.
So I'm delighted to hear that that's front of mind for you all as well. Because I think that that's something that's really, really important as we, as we talk about these things. And I would love, if you would speak to, do you have, are there conversations among staff? Or what kind of conversations among staff? Actually, I've got a couple of questions, but this is one. If, when a student is, how do you handle some, like, how are we thinking about handling some of these sensitive cases where the person being harmed is it from a marginalized background? Either because they're gender-fluid, trans, because they're coming from someplace else? Like, is that part of the conversation that you're having?
A little bit. And Dr. Ellis has been providing resources and trainings for all the counselors, psychologists, social workers. And so the last one we attended was about exactly that. And it was great. And there was a lot of great discussion from staff, too, about how to handle things, how to ask questions, and make sure that we are equitable. Yeah, so thank you, Dr. Ellis.
Thank you. And then just in what you're seeing from students and what's being reported, or the questions they're coming forward with, are there, what type of additional considerations are coming as students reemerge into social life after COVID? That's a very big question. I'm just wondering, like, is there anything that pops to mind? Or is there anything that you all have had to adjust to, to address to this time?
Well, I don't know so much about adjusting, but just continuing those conversations of boundaries and how to explain that. Because we were for so long where we didn't really have to worry about physical boundaries, because they were there, whether we wanted them or not. So just continuing to have those conversations. And, you know, just even talking with Kristin earlier about what's going on in some of the kindergarten classes. I think a lot of that is just, you know, getting used to being around people again for kids that weren't in school.
Yeah, that makes a lot of sense.
Yeah.
Awesome. I'll hold there. Thank you very much.
Anybody have other questions?
Thank you very much. And thank you.
I just want to also thank Carla, because she was out last night and tonight. But she has really spearheaded this work, K-12, as was evidenced by her presentation. So she's really done just tremendous work on her own because of her passion for these topics. So I really thank and appreciate all the work she's done, so.
Thank you, thank you. And again, I do really want to thank the students. And so reach out to me if you have more comments now that you've seen it all together, because you've all seen the kind of bits and pieces of it. Now that you've seen it all together, you are the experts. Reach out to me and let me know what you need, what you think, what's going well, what's not going well. All right? Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is our recognition of public comment on an agenda item. If we have anybody in the audience who'd like to address the board on an agenda item, now is the time to come up to the microphone. Item six, action items. A, finance action items. It is recommended by the superintendent that the Board of Education approve the following finance action items, one through two.
So moved.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? That carries. B, professional personnel action items. It is recommended by the superintendent that the Board of Education approve the following professional personnel action items, one through four.
So moved.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? That carries. C, support personnel action items. It is recommended by the superintendent that the Board of Education approve the following support staff action items, one through four.
So moved.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? That carries. D, other action items. It is recommended by the superintendent that the Board of Education approve the following action items, one through three.
So moved.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? That carries. Seven, recognition of public comment on a non-agenda item. If we have anyone with us who would like to speak to the board on a non-agenda item, now is the time to come to the microphone.
Hi, good evening. Gina Orfleet from, I'm in Glen Mo. I don't know if you guys need my address. I just want to take this opportunity to thank Jody Monroe and all our panelists last night. I attended the safety forum. And I just want to thank everyone for their time and everyone who came to attendance. It was very informative and beneficial. So thanks so much.
Thank you.
Eight, future meetings and events. We have added, there's, at the request of a board member, a facilities committee meeting on Monday, November 14. That will be at the high school, and that's at, Jody, what time is that?
Five thirty.
November 7.
November 7.
Oh, November 7.
Five thirty, right? Five thirty?
Five thirty? Yep. All right. Did you want us, go ahead?
May I? Yeah. And I just wanted to, I just wanted to clarify. I put in the request for the additional facilities meeting, based on the conversation at our last board meeting where we were discussing the substantial changes to, to the bond as everything unrolls and as different cost estimates come in. Because the anticipated needs and anticipated changes are of such a magnitude, and because it, we only, as board members, received the information for some of the details of that at the last meeting, just wanted to give an opportunity for the facilities committee to consider and weigh and really dig in on and discuss those changes before anything continued to move forward. So thank you to the facilities committee, to my board members, fellow board members who sit on that for taking the time to do that. I really appreciate it. I know it's more time out of your, your day, and thank you.
Thanks, Catherine. And then on November 16, that's our next regularly scheduled board meeting. And that's at Hammagrail Elementary School. And that will start at 7:00, anticipating executive session at 6:00. And the meeting after that is on December 7. I can't believe it's going to be December already. And again, starting at 7:00, anticipating executive session at 6:00, and that will be at Slingerland's. Seeing no need to go back into executive session, could I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Motion to adjourn?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Meeting adjourned.